Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council and San Bruno Redevelopment Agency Meeting of November 8th, 2011. Election Day. I hope you all did your duty. I want to thank the San Bruno Garden Club for the beautiful arrangement they always provide for us. Roll call, please.
Mayor Chair Ruane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Vice Chair Salazar.
Here.
Council Board Member O'Connell.
Here.
Council Board Member Medina.
Here.
Council Board Member Ibera.
Here.
City Attorney, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge to lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry.
I do have a few brief announcements. They're all good stuff. I'd like to let you know that Father Michael Briantes of St. Bruno's Catholic Church in San Bruno was nominated by me to receive a diversity award given by the Latino Chamber of Commerce at the Old County Courthouse in Redwood City about a week and a half ago. And he accepted that and it was a very wonderful evening. It's the mayor's diversity awards and number 20 cities represented. So congratulations to Father Michael. Also, I want to congratulate San Bruno's own Jeff Steinberg, who has been working for many years on a sojourn to the past. He takes a bunch of high school students to the South and explains to them and actually walks in the same footsteps as people like Martin Luther King. And it's quite a program. And he was honored last week by President Obama at the White House. So congratulations to Jeff and his program. And finally, the annual Coats for Kids Drive is being held this year at the National Guard Armory on the 17th of November from 4:00 till 7:00 p.m. And you can get details of the event on the Recology website. And it's changed this year. It's not in San Mateo Avenue. It's at the Armory. So we encourage you to look at the details, get the coats in for a very good cause and they need a lot of help. Any other announcements? All right. Presentations? We have no presentations this evening. Review of the agenda? Any changes? The approval of amendments to the city council meeting and San Bruno Redevelopment Meeting of October 25th, 2011? Any errors, changes, omissions? Seeing none, it will be approved as submitted. Consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff.
If there's nothing, I'll make motion move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent calendar and the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Notices have been published, posted in mail. We don't have a public hearing this evening. And number nine, public comment on items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and their action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to staff. Would anyone in the public like to speak to the council?
Thank you very much, Carol.
All right. We'll go right onto conduct of business. Our first item is 10A, receive a report on recommended changes to the Personnel Board and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. You have as your next item on the agenda this evening, the opportunity to appoint citizens to a number of our advisory bodies. And before you take that opportunity tonight after having interviewed individuals who've brought themselves forward at your last regular city council meeting, I wanted to advise you of some consideration that the, some of your advisory bodies and staff have made and that might impact your decision-making tonight as well as the potential of bringing forward an additional action item. I'll start with, there were two advisory bodies who have, over the course of the last few months, evaluated their work program and their composition and felt it was in their interest in yours and the communities to make some recommendations to you. The two are the Personnel Board and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. I'll start with the Personnel Board. That body has for some time performed very diligently and with a very significant level of activity on a particular project that has recently been completed and will serve the city well significantly into the future. And that is the complete review and update of all of the city's job classification descriptions. The city council is aware that that has been occurring because a number of those position descriptions have been brought forward for your action to confirm the recommendations of the Personnel Board and staff on those topics. On an ongoing basis, the Personnel Board has observed and is impacted by a work program that does not have an every-month consistency and need for, in their view, after deliberation, for a regular meeting schedule in that many of their meetings are relatively short. And it is their recommendation as a result not to discontinue their operation but to look at revising the meeting schedule to a quarterly program once every three months on a regular basis. And in between that, as needed, it would still be their ability to call a special meeting for any purpose that they felt was important. And secondly, on a different but related topic, the Personnel Board has for some number of years now been impacted by a turnover in some amount of time periods being impacted by only having four, in a couple of occasions, only three members on the board for some extended period of time. That is currently the case. There are four members currently serving on the Personnel Board. And in conjunction with their recommendation to move to a quarterly meeting schedule, the Board is also recommending for the council's consideration that you reduce the number of participants to three with an obvious transition period without, to go to three by attrition rather than removing one of the seated members. But at this point, to consider not appointing a fifth member. That recommendation comes in parallel to the previous recommendation to amend the regular meeting schedule to a quarterly process. I believe it was the Personnel Board's consideration that the work program was such that a three-member body could handle that and that it would be, as I said, easier to assure and maintain a quorum particularly with a body should it be your consideration to amend the meeting schedule that was only meeting once per quarter. Personnel Board has met with Council Member O'Connell as the, currently is on to that committee. And so she is informed and may be able to speak to any comments or questions the council may have. I'll move on quickly to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee and then turn it back to the council for questions and deliberation. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, as the council may recall, has a seven-member component. Four of those members are appointed at-large through the council's regular citizen advisory appointment process. And three of those members are by the bylaws for the committee liaison members from each of the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Transportation and Safety, the TSPC, TSPC, Traffic Safety Parking Committee, thank you, and the Planning Commission. Over the past fairly long period of time, I suspect it's been into the years, the liaison member from the Parks and Recreation Committee, Dave Nigel, has demonstrated an active interest and has regularly participated as in the liaison assignment to the Bike and Ped Committee. Assigned members of the Planning Commission and the TSPC have not and believe that their plate is full, so to speak, with their assignments to those respective bodies. I am informed that the TSPC does regularly monitor the Bike and Ped Committee agenda. And they could and would assign a, on a rotating basis, liaison person to attend the Bike and Ped Committee if and when there is an item that is of particular interest to them. Even that approach, though, based on the analysis by the Bike and Ped Committee, does not meet their interests to maintain a full component of seven members and to do that on a regular basis, both so that they can maintain a quorum at their meetings as well as that they can undertake the projects and activities that they have on their agenda. So it is their recommendation that you make those three positions, city council appointments as at-large members and eliminate the current and previous liaison assignment practice. I am sorry to inform you that the government code requires posting a notice of vacancies on citizen advisory committees so that it would not be the council's leisure tonight to appoint those at-large members from the current pool of people that you have available. We would need to backtrack a bit and post a notice and then bring you any additional candidates that were, that brought themselves forward. But you could certainly consider those and anybody who's already demonstrated their interest to you at a later time for appointment should it be the council's interest to accept the Bike and Ped Committee's recommendation. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. And perhaps that Council Member O'Connell may have some additional comments.
I mean, any comments at this time?
No, we had a very thorough discussion and there was a unanimous sentiment that the recommendations that were put forward go forward with the council.
Good. Any questions of the city manager?
Me too. Ken, your mic. I'd like to mention that I didn't report on the B-PAC because I haven't been able to make the meetings because they keep getting canceled. So, and when they did meet, you know, there was a conflict. But it's been really difficult to try and schedule a meeting and get together because there wasn't a quorum. So I think that's, and I think the B-PAC can get on its own now. And the fact that, you know, they need people that are more geared towards bicycles and pedestrian instead of from other committees.
I would just note that that is something I forgot to mention that is articulated in the staff report, that at the early stage of this group's formation, there was a little bit more need and interest for the forced diversity of opinions and interests to be present. But this group has really taken off. It's a very active, engaged, and energetic group that really has a dedication to bicycle and pedestrian-related issues. So they no longer feel the need and have demonstrated that, I believe.
And if I could ask, I mean, staff has a lot to do with that. You know, they've had some really good staff direction and especially the accomplishments, you know, with the grants and the other improvements on pedestrian and bicycle circulation.
Through the chair.
Rico. On this matter, on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, I can see that, makes sense. On the Personnel Board, I can understand the quarterly. The one issue I have or concern, I should say, is the decreasing of its membership from five to three. We had two new applicants interviewed, which we'd advertised for. We have an applicant that's currently on file, so we have three candidates to choose from. At a time when we're asking folks to get involved and engage in government and have participation, and we have those people that want to participate, I don't know why we would want to limit that. If it's the quorum issue, obviously, I think if it goes to quarterly basis, I think it makes the time more available for those individuals to schedule themselves and participate. Because if bicycle and pedestrian is having the same issue, then from their seven, why wouldn't maybe they go to five? And I think when you have a meeting of three, two are making decisions and we talk about civil service oversight. And I just think, I can't think of another committee or commission or board that this council appoints that has a membership of three. So that's my one concern.
Through the chair.
Irene.
I think the issue with the bicycle is that two of the members were from other commissions. And so they felt either overburdened or were overburdened having to attend two meetings per month. So this is, if they withdraw, this opens it up to people at large. So that was more the issue that way rather than people, than not having things to do. With the Personnel Board, it's really not having, they've done the bulk of the work and it was extremely tedious work, let me tell you. And they did an excellent job at it and they stuck to it. So it's more of, in my opinion, a workload rather than, you know, the lack of quorum was, I think partly, and I'm not hoping I'm not maligning anyone, is that the people would go and there's either not a lot of work to do or the work was not to their, what they expected, and then they just didn't come anymore. So that was, that was part of it. It's not a real exciting commission to be on, but it's an extremely necessary one. So, you know, if we want to do five, that's fine, but I don't know if it's really necessary.
Okay. Do we need a concurrence this evening or you still have postings to do if we agree?
We propose to bring back the change to the Personnel Board in a formal manner at your next meeting. However, the decision before you tonight is to, you have the opportunity either to appoint a member or to defer that for further consideration or decide not to appoint. And you can make that decision tonight.
Okay. So there's no action on item A then, just to receive the report?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
I think I made my statement. No other questions.
Anything else? All right, then we'll go to item B. Item B is appointment of citizens to Citizens Crime Prevention Committee, Culture and Arts Committee, perhaps Personnel Board, and Parks and Recs Commission Youth Representative. The way this has been done in the past is we interviewed an awful lot of people at the last meeting as well as a lot of people that weren't there that have been interviewed before. So we'll ask for nominations. First of all, on Citizens Crime Prevention Committee.
Through the chair, I'd like to nominate Peter Carey for Citizens Crime Prevention.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Okay. I'd like to nominate Brandon Lau.
Brandon Lau.
Brandon Lau.
I don't think we need a, we need a second on the nominations? No? Okay. All right. Any others? All right. All in favor of Mr. Peter Carey?
Aye.
All in favor of Mr. Brandon Lau?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Brandon Lau, you are now on the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee.
Sorry, Pete.
The next is Cultural Arts Commission. We have one vacancy. Any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Pamela Gamble.
All right. Any others?
I'm going to nominate, is it Jan or Jan Saga?
Any others? All right. All in favor of Pamela Gamble?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Pamela, you are now in Cultural Arts Commission. Park and Rec Commission, we are looking for one youth representative, high school student. We have one vacancy. Nominations?
I'd like to nominate Claudia Clon, I can't, I'm sorry. Claudia.
Okay. Any others? All in favor of Claudia?
Aye.
Aye.
Claudia, congratulations. And the Personnel Board, do you wish to defer this until the next meeting?
Do you make a motion or do you want discussion on this?
Just asking if you'd like to defer.
I think with our discussion, I mean, maybe we defer it and let the applicants know.
Okay. We all in agreement there?
Sure.
I'm okay with deferring it and we can bring it up for the discussion at the next meeting.
Okay. Very good. I think that's the last of our appointments this evening. So congratulations to everyone who got on and a heartfelt thank you for those who have interviewed with us. I want to explain, as we did at the interviews, do not get discouraged. There are a number of volunteer opportunities in this city. And I'm just going to read them. The city clerk will have these and we'll post them on the city website. Adopt a park, help to keep our parks open and open spaces and areas clean. Arbor Day, we help to plant trees in the community each October. Community Emergency Response Training, CERT, is 20 hours of emergency preparedness training. Community Services Department programs, or volunteers at the senior center with meals and transportation and special events and sports programs. Help library book sales, tutor children or adults to improve their reading skills. Be a homework center volunteer, help with special community events, and teach a one-day workshop for the Recreation Division. As also a ham radio club that insists in emergency situations. Operation Clean Sweep, help clean up a wide variety of public spaces on the first Saturday of each May. Youth Activities Committee, students in the grade seven through 12 help organize teen activities, community events, and service projects. And we're looking for youth sports coaches, volunteers with one of the nonprofit leagues or the city's recreation programs. So in addition to our commission boards and committees, we do have a lot of volunteer opportunities and we encourage all of you to please take advantage of them because that's pretty much how a lot of this city runs, is on volunteerism. And we couldn't do without you. So thank you very much to those who were appointed and thank you for those that have Item 10C, adopt a resolution approving parking restrictions on Atlantic Avenue and Bay Shore Circle North.
Honorable Mayor and members of city council, my name is Tina Saint. I'm Associate Civil Engineer with Public Services Department. I am here before you tonight to recommend adoption of new parking restrictions on Atlantic Avenue and Bay Shore Circle North. Currently, the north side of Atlantic Avenue between Montgomery Avenue and San Mateo Avenue has a combination of no parking zone, driveway, and loading zone. The fire department requested that the existing loading zone be replaced with, be replaced as no parking zone because when cars are parked at this loading zone and at the regular parking across from this loading zone, their fire trucks and fire engine cannot safely pass through this section of Atlantic Avenue. If the city council approved this change, the vehicles will not be able to park on the entire north side of Atlantic Avenue between Montgomery and San Mateo. In staff's review of fire department's request, staff felt removing the existing loading zone in a commercial area would have been a negative impact to local businesses. The TSBC concur with staff's evaluation and recommend the council to approve the existing loading zone to be removed, relocated. Apologize that. The proposed loading zone is approximately 40 feet on the south side of Atlantic Avenue and you will be removed with two regular parking spaces if approved. Local businesses were notified of the TSBC meeting. Staff received no objection of the proposed parking restriction on Atlantic Avenue. The next parking restriction is on Bay Shore Circle North. As you are aware, Bay Shore Circle North is a narrow, one-way local street, begins at Herman Avenue and eventually converts with Huntington Avenue East. A local resident that lives in, at the middle block of the street requests that the northwest corner of Herman and Bay Shore Circle North be established as no parking zone due to his concern of hitting or side-swiping parked cars when making a left turn from Herman Avenue. In staff's preliminary review, staff expects that most drivers that are accessing this roadway, lives in the area, and are familiar with the roadway configuration and should be able to successfully and safely make this left turn. Therefore, the staff did not recommend the TSBC to approve the no parking request as requested by the resident. However, after public input, hearing of public inputs, the TSBC felt even though most drivers could maneuver the turn at this intersection, new parking restriction could be established to increase driver confidence and improve safety due to the awkward roadway configuration. Therefore, they consider and recommend a shorter no parking zone of 20 feet at the potential impact location right in front of 80 Bay Shore Circle North. The proposed no parking zone is about 20 feet and you will remove one regular parking space. The resident of 80 Bay Shore Circle North has no objection and in fact is in favor of this parking restriction. That concludes the presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff?
Mr. Mayor, this one is, this is exactly how it was this afternoon. I mean, there was a car parked there, just like in the aerial. And just like you described it, you have to do it at about five miles an hour so that you don't hit the parked car or you don't hit the curb. So I think this is, this is a good solution here. I mean, yeah, there's limited parking on the street, but I mean, there's no limited parking on the properties. I mean, you drive in that neighborhood and there's six cars in every property. My question for Atlantic Avenue is, again, going out there this afternoon, no one parks on that north side, anyway. I think there's a common knowledge that you can't get through if they park there or it just seems, doesn't make sense to park there because it does almost block the street. There's another block, though, isn't there? Isn't there the 200 block that goes to the Dead End or to the, from Montgomery, from Montgomery, Montgomery West?
That's correct.
Right. That's what I thought we were talking about because I saw the red, you know, the red parking on this 100 block. And so I think, I mean, you've got, don't you have the same issue on the 200 block? Even though no one parks on the north side?
This request was brought up by the fire department, so they must have some previous experience when they were trying to get through this street and they could not get through. And once, if there's a potential fire event at this section of Atlantic Avenue and if, for whatever reason, that loading zone is being utilized, they're, please, they're access.
Well, you have the identical, same issue at the next block, which I believe might be the 200 block, which is just west of Montgomery. It is, it is a street because it does have a street sign there and, yeah.
Based on your comment, staff will follow up with the fire department and will assess the situation on the block what you are mentioning considering.
And my only, my only comment with that whole area is that, I mean, loading zones are only good if they're used as loading zones. And it's my experience seeing in that neighborhood that cars park in loading zones just like any other parking space. So if they want a loading zone, you know, give it to them, but just know that the enforcement may not be always present for them to, to make it always available to those properties.
Through the chair.
Rico.
Starting on Atlantic, Councilman Rivera was there today. I was there this weekend and I had the same question, too. Because I saw it. Because I saw it this weekend, now again, it's the weekend, it's Saturday, it's Sunday. The mayor's appointing, so you'd think people might be home, too. But, um, it was pretty clear on the street that we're looking at now. If you wanna go back one more, then yes, that was congested. I would hate to see a fire apparatus try to get back there. You had businesses and you have a resident that I could see, an upstairs resident, that reside on that area. The, the yellow zone, is that for the two businesses that are nearby, which is a parts facility and a detailing facility?
Um, yes. But even though it's right next to those two businesses, um, other businesses could utilize that loading zone as well.
I understand that, but is it primarily why it was initiated? It was for those two businesses only, or is it to serve, you know, allegedly a truck's gonna pull up there and then unload and wheel the, the merchandise down the street around the corner? Or, trying to understand the history of that because when you look at it, there's a roll-up door on the proposed yellow side right where the yellow ends, where they can unload and load. Across the street, they have a roll-up door that they can load and unload and pull into the driveway. So, I'm trying to understand, the yellow zone is to serve whom?
Um, staff can go back and research on who initiated that request originally.
How, uh, how was presented previously, uh, staff recommendation for the loading zone to the south was to relocate the prior existent loading, uh, loading zone to the north. Uh, who, uh, for how long that loading zone, uh, was at that location, staff does not have information at this time, but will follow up with information for you. Uh, the intent relocating that loading zone was based on, uh, to accommodate, uh, the need and to, uh, the concern expressed by, uh, the businesses in that area.
If I could just ask, is it the council members' interest that the loading zone be considered? Are you, are you questioning whether there's a need for it at all?
Yeah, in going down there and seeing if it's to serve those two businesses specifically and they have roll-up doors that they can pull a vehicle in, I'm, I'm questioning, not to say, not to relocate it. I can understand that. But I'm trying to understand the value of who it's serving in that area, rather than just having it designated.
We can do some further work on that. I think if it's the council's pleasure, what you could do is authorize the red curb for the entire length of the north side of the block.
And that's necessary.
You've already been, right. And, uh, we've already been asked to take a look at, uh, the 200 block and to consult with the Fire Department about that. Um, we could defer, if it's the council's pleasure, the establishment of the loading zone for further study. So, if, if that's your interest, we can, we can certainly take that action and, and do some further work with the businesses in the immediate neighborhood to find out how necessary or desirable it is.
Thank you. And then going to Bay Shore Circle, um, obviously, that is always a concern. You know, we have that, my, that area that I wish would be shortened and then it would be more adequate for vehicles to travel. It's very tight and cars don't park on the street, they park on the sidewalk. And I don't mean a little, I mean, most of the vehicle. I can understand why. They're concerned about being, uh, hit, um, you know, accidentally. Um, I know when I was there, if I was to make that turn, uh, on the green, that there were two trucks that were stick, uh, big trucks sticking out, quite out. So, now I'm thinking, well, then we should've had red there. Granted, the parking, you don't wanna restrict that too much either because I know it's, it's, uh, it's needed. I think that area, that addresses something, but it doesn't address the main issue of that area that has been ongoing. Uh, and that, again, is the upkeep and the maintenance and who's paying for that Bay Shore Circle, I'll call it the island. And it's also, it would be ideal if we could get that and have it, uh, you know, shortened in size so that there's more flow, not only for the residents and getting by, just trying to drive around there, but also for our emergency vehicles.
Irene?
Thank you. I was just wondering, while we're doing all this investigation, is there any possibility of cutting into some of that? 'Cause it is owned by Caltrain or do we own, I can't remember.
Bay Shore Circle is owned by BART.
By BART.
You, you said the open space, the island in the middle that the council mayor was discussing. By BART.
How did that happen?
How do we do that?
But, I mean, maybe, maybe there's some value in looking at taking part of it or using part of it or getting them to give us part of it to cut in for parking, cut into it for parking for the neighborhood 'cause it is horribly, uh, narrow street. And this is an aside of this, since we're doing all this investigation. Uh, when I was driving there today on Herman, there was maybe 10, that's probably exaggeration, seven limousines parked on Herman as well. Um, just similar to the pro, it was kind of like they used to have on Seventh Avenue. They used to park on Seventh, now they're parking on Herman. And that really narrows the street down as well and makes it difficult for neighbors to, the neighborhood to park. So, I don't know, we should be doing something with that or informing those people they shouldn't be parking there either. But other than that, I'm in favor of the, the red part.
Anything else?
Do you want a motion? Or do we need a resolution?
Introduce something. Introduce.
Yeah. I will introduce the resolution to have the red zone on the north side of Atlantic and the red zone on that section of, um, Bay Shore Circle North.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could, could I request clarification as to the specifics of the council direction? I hear two councilmembers expressing interest in our, uh, more, uh, deliberate outreach to BART and addressing this, uh, issue of Bay Shore Circle for the city's purposes. Um, is that something that the council wishes us to pursue?
Okay. Irene, wanna clarify that?
Oh, I definitely, uh, it's always been...
Uh, it's abundantly clear that I have wanted and I think we should pursue and we should really, yes, make this one of those New Year's resolutions, but start early.
But, but, but not just Rico, you want a, a motion and a, and a vote, or? I just wanna confirm with the City Council that that was your intent.
She's written this for me too long, so I'm clarifying.
We don't need a separate motion. Um, and just to confirm, the, uh, deferral of the relocation of the loading zone pending further study. That appears to be part of your motion as well. Yes, thank you.
Okay, we agreed, that's the clarification. Okay.
We're all clear.
Good. All right. 10D, receive your report and adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to executing an improvement agreement, affordable housing agreement, and maintenance agreement for the Cedar Mills development located at 599 Cedar Avenue.
Thank you and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Uh, I believe this is a development that the City Council knows well, but for the sake of background, we have a location map on the board behind me. This is, uh, known as, now known as the Cedar Mills Development. Used to be known as the Cedar Grove Development and there was a name change recently. Um, this is a development that is just getting underway, under construction. Um, it was approved by the Planning Commission earlier this year and is proposing 14 new single-family homes on smaller lots on what was formerly the Peninsula Christian Fellowship Church site, a church that burnt down nearly 10 years ago. Um, as part of the normal approval process, there was an architecture review, uh, permit approved, something called a planned unit permit that allowed smaller lots, as well as a tenant map as required by the Subdivision Map Act. And as part of this, there was hundreds of different conditions of approval and several of those required, uh, different agreements for the city to enter into different agreements with the developer. And that's the subject of the report tonight. And that includes a improvement agreement, and I'll go into the details later, but improvement agreement, an affordable housing agreement, as well as two different maintenance agreements. And before I go into the details, you may note that this is the first time that you're seeing a number of different agreements before you on the same agenda. In the past, we've done it on a piecemeal basis where you might've seen the, I mean, you've basically only seen the improvement agreements coming before you. Our, uh, city attorney, Mark Zaffarana, pointed out that it's typical to take up all the agreements for city councils to, city councils to look at. So, that is the practice that we're doing, uh, we're bringing forward to you now and that you'll see in the future. And we, we're always gonna aim to bring you all the agreements at one time so you can see the full picture of the different agreements that are associated with each development. So, with that said, um, the improvement agreement is a pretty standard document. And what this does is state the standards by which the public improvements associated with the project have to be built. So, this includes everything like the water system, the storm drain system, the sanitary sewer system, as well as certain roadway improvements. Um, there's bonding and insurance requirements that go along with this, as well as warranty requirements. And upon a completion of the work, this will be back to the City Council to accept those improvements. And once that hap- happens, the improvement agreement will go away. Um, the second is the affordable housing agreement. As you know, the city of San Bruno has a 15% affordable housing requirement for all developments and there's basically one of two routes you could go. Route A is you include the affordable housing onsite. It usually doesn't make a lot of sense on a for-sale product in single-family. So, option B is that the developer paying a Luffy payment that goes towards the provision of affordable housing elsewhere within the city of San Bruno. That's the route that we went this time. We have a calculation that calculates what that total payment is. Comes out to about $29,000 per unit, um, per home on this site, which comes out to about $400,000 in all. So, the affordable housing agreement lays out the details of, of this payment. But it comes down to, they're gonna have to pay $29,000 per unit at the time of building permit. And once that happens, the affordable housing obligation goes away and we're able to provide that elsewhere within San Bruno. There are two maintenance agreements. Um, much of this development is gonna be privately held and maintained by the developer and then by the HOA. This lays out our requirements for maintenance of those improvements. So, everything from the common area landscaping to the lighting improvements to certain sidewalks. And there's certain standards that those have to be maintained, too. Um, and if they don't maintain them to the standards, this allows the city to go in there, do the work, and file a lien against the property to recoup those costs. Um, the second maintenance agreement is actually something that is new and has to do with stormwater. Um, this is something, there's new, as the council knows, there's new federal laws, new state laws, and in particular, that have to do with the maintenance of stormwater requirements. Over the years, cities required certain stormwater provisions, swales, and different things to mitigate stormwater impacts, but those weren't maintained, so they lost their desired effect. So, now there's certain maintenance agreements or maintenance requirements, as well as city inspection requirements with reimbursement that are embedded within this maintenance agreement. Um, as I remember, as I mentioned, there's an HOA now, uh, a lot of homeowners associations now that we didn't necessarily have 30, 40, 50 years ago that take on many of these responsibilities. Those responsibilities are within the agreements. Uh, that's not to say the city doesn't have responsibilities, um, with this, but those responsibilities are reimbursed through these different agreements, so inspections and things like that. So, each agreement, the improvement agreement will go away when the, there's an acceptance. The affordable housing agreement will go away once the payment, the, the payment is made. However, the maintenance agreements will stay with the life of this, life of this project. So, that concludes my presentation and I could take any questions at this time.
Good. Any questions of staff at this time? Ken?
Chair, uh, when you say about, uh, improvements, and I see on the, uh, on one of the site plans that you're, the, probably the entire frontage of, as far as, uh, hardscape sidewalks and driveway cuts will all be, all be new?
Correct.
Yeah. Uh, when you, when you mention lighting improvements, what does that entail? Does that entail maybe Pepper and Cedar Avenue, or is that just within the, uh, within the confines of the property?
Correct. I, I believe, and Clark could correct me if I'm wrong, the majority of the lighting improvements are gonna be the private lighting improvements onsite. So, there's new homes back there in the Grove area as long, as well, as where the church parking lot is now. Uh, the lighting outside, um, there's already lights out there, which will remain.
It's my, it's my little pet peeve right now and I was out there and I noticed that there was really only one street light right there at the corner. And then there's, there's not another street light until, um, probably a good two-thirds of the block, uh, west of Pepper Drive. So, I mean, I, I can't recall how, what, what the effect is, I can, you know, in the evening there, but it would just seem that this would be the time to probably improve lighting on the street.
Yeah. Uh, the Public Services Director will follow up on that. And one other note is, there was previously a street light that was, that appeared to be a city street light that was actually located onsite on the, the church parking lot that hasn't been illuminated. And we have received a call from, from a resident that said, hey, there's less light in that area since that light hasn't been, uh, you know, hasn't been illuminated. So, there will be some light overall just by having that development lit, but I agree, we'll take a look at the perimeter as well.
All right, um, Mr. Rico.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Council, and I believe the representative from the, the project. I'm, I'm here as your representative to the mosquito and vector control district with a couple small requests of the proposed developer. I met with our district director, Robert Gay, and he is in, in agreement with these couple little requests. The district requests a copy of the proposed plans for this project that deal with how collected stormwater will be collected, stored, and redirected back into the ground. The district's concern relates to possible effects of standing water on the breeding of mosquitoes. Uh, number two, and if some of the water is to be directed to an off-site location, uh, we request information as, uh, on this aspect also. And thirdly, the district also desires to be provided with the contact information for the person or persons and numbers to be used to gain access to any locked or fenced areas for sampling and possible treatment. And I have a copy of this that I will, and I have our district contact information for the, the person. And I supplied this to Erin and Clara ahead of time. Thank you.
Do we have any issues with that, Erin?
No, absolutely. We can get him the information. And actually, the stormwater maintenance agreements are aimed to, uh, take care of some of those issues that used to happen with standing water within broken stormwater systems. So, we'll get him the information and, um, there's also, uh, Public Service Director is pointing out there's an access to property, uh, section within the maintenance agreements which allows access. So, that's covered there as well.
So, the approval tonight, if it goes through of this resolution, in fact, includes the request?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Action? Irene?
I'll, I'll do the action, but also I want to, um, say I appreciate having everything all together. I would read one section, have a question, and then continue reading and have it answered in the next part of what we were doing. So, uh, thank you. This makes a lot more sense. Um, so with that, I will introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item number 11, reports of commission, boards, and committees, there aren't none this evening. Item 12, comments from councilmembers.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, just a little announcement, this Thursday is the Battle of the Strip, which is the rivalry of CAP and Mills football. Uh, Thursday, it's at home, it's at CAP. Uh, the lights will be there and, uh, JV's at 4:00 PM and the varsity at 7:00 PM. And your very own mayor will be in a rally parade at 6:00 PM. I think so.
He will, he will be there.
Also, I wanted to announce, an early announcement, that, uh, the 2012 Relay for Life, which is the American Cancer Society, uh, will be April 28th and 29th, 2012, and has been secured to be at Cappuccino High School.
Okay.
So, we're going to try and make a bigger push to get the, uh, the greater community involved and, uh, since in the last two years it's been up at Skyline. So, I will get you more information on that. April 28th and 29th.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, closed session, we had a closed session a little while ago, so there's nothing coming up now. Uh, item number 14 is adjournment until the next regular city council meeting, November 22nd, right here at the Senior Center.